Communications comment through informational items?
I don't know, I was supposed to come back and let you know how the residential pickup was at an earlier start time. And so far it's been working out good, I haven't had any complaints or nothing. So, I don't know.
It's working out?
Yeah. We're still, we might start, we're starting about 6:30 right now, 6:15, 6:30, whenever the truck gets warmed up. Driver starts at 6:00, so in the summertime you might be a little bit, you know, closer to the 6:00, but no earlier than 6:00 for sure. But, I don't, it hasn't been across them, I don't know if you guys have heard anything?
I don't know.
I don't see anything wrong with you keep doing it the way you're doing it.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
That sounds like influence.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anything else along that item? Okay, any old business?
I was going to request on the liaison appointments, could we get a new updated list?
Yeah, we were gonna do that today, but sorry.
Well, just.
No, I forgot to ask, you guys kind of speak up a little bit, because I've got some fluid built up on my ears and I'm having a couple of hearing problems.
Okay.
Um, I guess we can just go right into new business. The LightSpeed Networks. Ginger's here, and I asked her to give us a brief discussion and stuff on this, to tell us more about this, and she's, uh...
Sure, would you like me to just go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, I've been working with LightSpeed Networks with Commissioner Kessler now for several months, I don't remember when we first started, to, uh, with the end goal of trying to get internet services into the Warner Valley and also Surprise Valley area with a project that, um, we got money from USDA to do. And, um, we just found out probably about a month ago that they had intentions of, it's gonna help Warner Valley, it's how we ended up finding out about it is because they are, um, going to be bringing, uh, a peppy amount of fiber into Lakeview, and so this is what their proposal is to you, is, and for the franchise agreement, to bring that in. There, you know, I'm not exactly sure, except for in my conversations today, I got right on it when I realized what was going on, and there was sort of some miscommunication happening with them. They are a little concerned about being here in person because of our weather conditions and road conditions, et cetera. But anyway, the person that we've been dealing with is Stephen McCartney, and the person that is really involved with the sales end and developing this particular piece of the project is Brian Adams. And I can get him on the, on my cellphone, on speakerphone right now, he's aware of the need for you folks to ask questions. I know they sent the PowerPoint presentation, you probably had a chance to take a look at that, and even if you haven't, he's available right now to answer any questions you might have. And we've found them to be incredibly easy to work with, and from my perspective as an economic development person, um, this is not gonna do anything but enhance services here in Lakeview, and bring more bandwidth, more internet capacity to Lakeview for business and, and for residential. I'm most, most excited about it for businesses because they'll have more bandwidth, that they can, they can use higher speeds, et cetera. So, but, we'll, we'll talk to Brian about that, but I've been asking more questions.
Or do you guys have questions that you want to talk to him about right at this point?
Hmm, I don't know necessarily with him, but perhaps what all is already available here in the community, I don't have any, he's not gonna probably have that.
He does know quite a bit about that. I think it would be really helpful for you to have him on the line so that he can assist you with those questions.
All right, well, maybe.
Do you need to raise your chair up so people can hear you?
That's okay. Uh, what I'll do is I'll put my phone on the table, you might have to pass it around when you've got questions, so that, uh, he can hear you. Hi, Brian? Hi, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone and lay you down on the table here. They'll pass the phone around to ask the questions, and hopefully they'll be able to hear you. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have a question? Did you want to ask him that question?
I, I, this is Mike Warren, and I just wanted to ask in regards to, you speak of third-party fiber assets, and the services provided to Lakeview at this point, how is your service different than the third-party fiber assets, or is it a fourth party?
So, the third-party fiber assets that LS Networks uses today is Hunter Communications. Uh, Hunter currently has a total capacity of 100 meg that comes into Lakeview, and our plan, if we're approved with the franchise agreement, is to bring 10 gigs worth of capacity in, and, um, at a certain point, in a point that we would deploy, would is capable of providing 2.3 terabits worth of data. So it really ramps up the bandwidth availability for the community as a whole.
Okay, and the, the primary reason that you're coming into the Lakeview area is to provide the Surprise Valley and rural areas surrounding Lakeview?
No. Well, that's, that's one of the potential opportunities that we're working on with, uh, with Ginger Canyon in the county as a whole. Today, LS Networks serves 17 customers throughout Lakeview, most of those are state and county facilities, along with healthcare customers, um, the, um, the jail just north of town. And so the intent is, is that we would improve the services for those existing customers as we exhausted the capacity, um, in town. And then, um, that would allow us to better serve the greater community of Lakeview with additional bandwidth, um, once it's in place.
Where is your fiber optic line to come in to Lakeview, Greg?
Um, so, we have a couple options on where that's gonna come in, where actually turnings, um, within town is one of the, um, conversations we'd like to have with the city after the franchise agreement's been approved.
And what kind of equipment do you have to have on the lines, and how do you plan on distributing here in Lakeview?
Yeah, great question. So, the equipment, the, the core equipment that we would, um, uh, put into, into town there, that would kind of be the aggregation equipment, is a Alcatel Plus Sense, um, 775012E is the, uh, is the model that we would deploy. And then, the fiber optics, um, would then, that would be what, you know, we consider the hub, so everything would go back to use that piece of equipment. And then the local fiber distribution would go out to each one of the customers that we serve. The, um, equipment, um, for the existing customers would be, um, a Nokia, or again, Alcatel is a, Alcatel is a vendor that we used there, recently acquired by Nokia. And, uh, CPE is a SASK, is the model. Um, long-term, if the community is interested in participating in our Connected Community program, then that would be a G-PON, um, technology that would be deployed, again, on the Alcatel Plus Sense, uh, platform. But it would be a subset, um, adhesive equipment that handles the gigapod, gigabit passive optical network, um, uh, technology, and that would tie into the Alcatel Plus 775012E core router that we would have as a hub piece of equipment.
Okay, that's pretty much in your plant here, in the head end, I guess is what you would call that in Lakeview, or wherever you're looking at. But as far as the visibility, the aesthetic value that we're gonna look at, what's, what are we looking at as far as your distribution within the town of Lakeview to get to your customers?
Sure, great question. So, if there's existing aerial infrastructure in place, so existing poles, we would use the poles that are in place today, very rarely do we never place new poles. So the same, the same infrastructure that, um, that the joint uses, that Hunter uses, that Surprise Valley uses, we would, um, tie new fiber optic lines to that. Where there are not any existing aerial infrastructure in place, then we would put the infrastructure underground. And the way that's done through boring worst-case scenario is trenching, where we would dig up, dig a hole, trench along the way, put the stuff down and in, and then bury that, and then repay any, uh, any areas that we dug up.
So can you provide to the town of Lakeview all of the areas that you would have, the lines that you're speaking of, that would be visible on all of our overhead power lines, is what I guess you're speaking of? Can you provide the, the areas that would be visible to anyone here in Lakeview on all the lines? And how big a line would that be going down each one? And if you're tying in with, like, Hunter Communications, CenturyLink, I understand, most of their, their communications are underground, but if you're tying in with the above-ground Hunter Communications lines and existing lines, can you also indicate how you're going in to business with them, I guess?
Yeah, so we, we are partnered with Hunter Communications today, not only in Lakeview, but in Mendocino, Climate Falls, we're doing a joint venture with Hunter in Northern California, so we have a strong working relationship with them today. Um, the, the size of the, of the cable aesthetically is gonna be anywhere from three inches to, um, uh, four and a half, five inches in diameter. And, um, it would be, again, almost all the infrastructure that we're looking at is on the Surprise Valley, um, electrical infrastructure, so we would be hanging an additional line on those existing pole lines.
So just the Surprise Valley lines through town, the others are Pacific Power?
Um, yeah, so some may use, uh, Pacific Power. Um, we haven't gone through the permitting with them directly, um, until we have the franchise agreement, uh, agreement in place. But we have working relationships with, um, with, um, Pacific Power, um, we've had conversations with Surprise Valley, we haven't hung any infrastructure on Surprise Valley poles, uh, to date, um, but we're confident that, uh, that will be a working relationship that, uh, that we can easily figure out down the road.
But you can provide the, the lines and the routes of where these three and a half to five-inch diameter cables would be placed?
Yeah, so right now the intent is, um, is, uh, two, possibly three buildings downtown, and on that PowerPoint presentation it should outline where those, um, where that infrastructure is gonna attach to the existing poles.
I, I will pass this down, there's probably other questions.
Why don't you pass on the questions I have?
Do you want to give them one?
So, essentially, you're looking for a franchise agreement which would then allow you to do this, has that language been drafted and given to us? I don't see the information yet in front of us.
Um, if, if, if Valley, our project manager, that, that, that has not supplied our standard franchise agreement, uh, we could definitely provide you with what we use with other communities. Uh, if there is, if, if the city of Lakeview has an existing franchise agreement that, that they standardized for telecom service providers, we'd be more than happy to take a look at that. Um, but I can take this as a takeaway that, um, we can send you our standard agreements, uh, uh, this afternoon.
Great. And that, that was probably my biggest question, is just that we review that and have our legal counsel review it, and so might be best if we look at our existing, we have two, and then compare it with what you guys use as your standard, and then, you know, come up with the best, you know, best agreement. That's, that's all I have, everything else sounds real good, so.
Okay.
This is Ray Turner, the mayor. Um, the question I have, are you gonna have somebody or an office here in this town, or how do people get ahold of you to set up a service?
Yeah, uh, great question. So, um, um, right, depending on where this project leads with, with Lakeview, if, if the city is interested in participating in the Connected Community program, in the Connected Community program is basically where we sit down with the, with the local city fellows, um, sometimes that's the, the mayor, sometimes that's the city council, sometimes all the above. Uh, I know in Burns, we did a town hall meeting where we addressed the general public as a whole, um, to look at, um, you know, what is the current need for broadband services within the community, do you feel like you're being served appropriately today, or are you interested in, um, a new service for Hunter coming in with the custom-built plan? If we were to go, go down the road of a connected community, we would definitely, uh, open up a storefront and have, um, uh, one to three employees, um, that would be hired and would be part of the community near town. Uh, if it's simply serving the anchor institutions that we serve today, we would continue to support them with our sales staff, um, that's kind of spread throughout, um, Oregon. So, from a sales standpoint, we, we address each one of our customers from a vertical standpoint. So we have somebody that's dedicated to healthcare, we have somebody that's dedicated to businesses, somebody that's dedicated to government, and we would work through those, through those existing sales channels to provide services to the anchor intended institutions.
Okay. Roberta, you have anything?
Um, this is Roberta Van De Laat, I'm here. And I had received communication through Valerie Starr.
Okay.
And I had asked her if she had, if you guys had had any communication with Hunter's communication, and she indicated that she didn't know why we would need to do that.
Yeah, um, so, at a, at a regulatory level, we have not had conversations with Hunter regarding the franchise agreement. And typically, we don't talk with other carriers when we're, when we're working through a franchise agreement. That being said, on the business and partnership side, we have had several conversations with Hunter about leveraging each other's networks for redundancy purposes. So we would continue to work with Hunter on their primary, um, uh, fiber path into town, and then we would bring the secondary path into town, and then we would buy services from each other to help support redundancy and reliability of services to the community as a whole. Um, and so we've had those level of conversations, but we, we haven't had any direct conversations with Hunter regarding us applying for a franchise agreement.
Because my understanding through the town attorney is that, um, Hunter's has a non-exclusive franchise agreement with the town, but they have to, um, be in agreement with a new franchise to come in. So we need to have those, you know, that communication sooner than later, and then if you would email me a copy of your, um, franchise agreement that you have, then I can work on that, and we can work together on that.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, is it the city's preference that, uh, that LS Networks reach out to Hunter and have that conversation to get them to agreement, or do you prefer that the city have that conversation with Hunter directly?
Well, either one, I don't, I don't know what all you're going to be doing, so I would think it would be easier if you had those communications myself, because I'm not a tech type person, so.
Yeah, no problem. So, so I'll be more than happy to, to facilitate that conversation with Hunter.
Okay, that would be great. And then, like I said, if you could email me the, um, kind of a draft franchise agreement, and we can work through that with our legal counsel.
Excellent. And, um, um, Valerie does have your email, correct?
Yes, yes, she does.
All right.
Okay?
Roberta.
So, um, if anyone wants to get off that call, I can either get that over to you later this evening, or, uh, first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, and if you can hold on one moment, I have, the counselor wants to ask another question.
Absolutely.
When you mentioned redundancy, this is Mike Warren again, and I, I'm sorry I didn't ask while ago, but redundancy is very important in regards to providing services to a community, and of course, we have been lacking in a lot of ways, and I'm sure that's why the, the efforts have been done by the South Central Oregon Economic Development and the county. And the town has, has got some pretty good services, but as I mentioned while ago, you're looking at providing services outside of town as well as in town, it sounds as though. But you mentioned you already have existing customers here, I guess, through LS, is that right?
Yeah, so, so like I said, um, I, I'll have to go back and look into the final count, but there's roughly 15 to 18 customers that we serve today in Lakeview, yes.
Is that through Hunter's, Hunter's Communications Network? Is that what you're doing, is you're buying from them right now?
Yeah, so we buy on wholesale basis from Hunter Communications, or, um, the last model access into those facilities.
And redundancy, and correct me if I'm wrong, but redundancy is, right now we've got one fiber optic line into the, the community, and with two fiber optic lines, which is, I guess, what I hear you're proposing is bringing another redundant line to our community, which gives us that redundancy that is so needed.
Yeah, that's correct. So it would be a redundant service coming into the community, and, and a couple things typically happen when that, when that takes place. One is, is obviously the, um, the reliability of the services improves, um, and then number two, as competitors enter the market, then that typically drives the, the price for services down as more competition enters the marketplace.
Right.
So the community is, is better served by, uh, high reliability with multiple paths coming in and out of town, and then the end consumer, um, um, gets, um, greater value for the, the bandwidth and services as more competition is introduced in the community.
But it sounds as though right now you've already got a pretty good relationship and a consortium working with an already redundant line, or one line, and so redundancy would come about from another line being provided. So that does concern me that perhaps you both go together and just provide one line, rather than the redundancy that you're speaking of right now. So, as long as your proposal is to provide that second fiber optic line into Lakeview, I can see some great assets there. Otherwise, you're just trying to beat up what we've already got.
Yeah, and it's, we would not be doing, going through a franchise agreement application and, um, establishing a law, if all that we intended to do was get together with Hunter and beat up that existing single line. Um, you know, um, speaking, just kind of candidly, we would be able to accomplish that with how, applying for the franchise agreement, uh, difficult, or similar to how we're providing the services for our existing customers today. So the intent is most definitely to provide a secondary redundant path into, into the town.
That's good news. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. If, if, I apologize that, uh, that we don't have somebody from LS Networks in person, we, we try to technical almost all, we have, uh, somebody physically present there so that we can answer these type of questions. Just, uh, with weather and, uh, and work schedule, it just didn't quite work out for us to make it down there, um, uh, earlier this month. So again, apologize if we're not there in presence, and, uh, hopefully we can, we answer all the questions, but if not, feel welcome to reach out to LS Networks with any follow-up questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll talk to you later, have a great evening.
All right, bye.
Goodbye.
So does everybody understand the, the issue around the redundancy? Yeah, and, and that's something that we've been really hoping, what, what happened, I was hoping they'd understand, if one line goes down, the other one's still available. It may reduce the speed, or it may reduce the service to a certain extent, but at least we have a connection with outside world. So when you've got two coming in, you've got less chance of, of the whole system going down. Um, working in Modock County a little bit with this project that we've been doing, Surprise Valley and Alturas both in the last 18 months have had a complete fail. And Surprise Valley was down for a week. No phone service, no emergency services, no, nothing. The only communication they had, no cell service, nothing. The only communication they had was shortwave radio through Forest Service, BLM, or, you know, somebody hammering your operator or something. Um, they had the same problem.
But that wasn't due to their fiber optics.
Pardon?
They don't have fiber optics in Surprise Valley.
Actually, Hunter has fiber into Cedarville. And then they, they beam it out, and they've got some T-1 lines or something.
Okay.
But anyway, but you understand my point, they don't have redundancy, the Hunter and LS Networks are working to try to get redundancy into, um, at least Alturas, because they've had some pretty scary problems too. So this would help, you know, that would really help us, but I think you're really smart to, you know, make sure that that's what they're gonna do, like you said. And, and it's true, they don't need a franchise agreement to just bundle more fiber, or bundle, do something to enhance whatever they currently got with Hunter. Um, so this is, I mean, to me, this is really good news, not only for the outlying areas but for, for Lakeview, this puts us, you know, in a position where hopefully, you know, other, um, you know, if we do have some other companies or whatever that want to come in, that will, you know, will enhance their, their thoughts about that. And they have reached capacity with their anchor, um, with their anchor, uh, customers here, and, you know, it's like, I'm just starting to understand how this whole system works. It's complicated. So, anyway, that's all I have, I just want to make sure that you guys had the opportunity to really delve into it.
I appreciate that.
Anybody, do you have any comments? I'm, I'm, I can, you know, I guess just keep working on this so we give more and more information. So. Okay. Next item is a letter here from Mike Beeson for the closure of E Street for the, from the Chamber Building to Affordable Fitness, not including Center to First, um, like 31 First Street before a F Street like they did last year. This, this was a big, big thing, and it's, uh, money that comes back to the community from this, and I, I, I'm all for doing it again, but somebody needs to make motion on it.
And the organization is occupying E Street, is that what?
So, and in the past when we've approved these, we just checked with our Public Works and Police Department, make sure that they're aware of it, and they know that this, this is what we've decided as a council. I, I moved to approve the street closure, um, July 22nd, 2017, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and recommend that they work with our Public Works and law enforcement personnel to, to make sure that this is, is conducted appropriately.
Who's in May second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Now, I'm not, I don't, I don't quite get what this is, but maybe someone in the dorm room might be able to explain this to me, because it has to do with Burns.
So, so I had sent this pack of information about, um, GIS services that, that Harley County, um, currently have. um, currently has provided by a, an employer that they, um, have a part-time contract with currently. Um, I, a little background information too, is I, I went to Hardy County on, on Friday to, to have a follow-up meeting with the new county court members. Judge Pete Reynolds was there, and Bryce Merz, their GIS coordinator. So, uh, they are working on putting together a follow-up letter to this information, so at this time, this is just information for you, that's what they can provide. What I'm recommending is that, um, soon, at a future date, we sit down, we as a council, but also with Scott Lee from Number One, um, and, and then we talk about what we want to do moving forward, as I mentioned last council meeting. We certainly have a need for more GIS services in the, in the community, not only at the county level, but, um, but certainly here at the town level. And it works best for all agencies. It's not this, you know, everybody can benefit from this. And, um, you know, currently we're outsourcing most of this work to other, other agencies, and, and I know that we can at least provide a part-time job, and the money, I believe, is there for a full-time position, we just have to decide what we want to do, uh, you know, moving forward, either in the short term or long term. So, you know, our status quo, obviously, but, so. As more information becomes available, I'll shortly share with you, and then we can get something scheduled. Also with the board commissioners, um, our assessment office, with Dave Knowles and myself, and the planning director, and probably, you know, a member of each of the other, you know, city, um, fire police, you know, you can, we actually benefit from this too, so.
I think too, and we kind of talked about, I think, that if the county needs, you know, commissioners, and with the town council, and the employees, you know, all the different things.
And similarly, I don't, I don't think we'd need to have, um, the county court from Burns come down, but they're, they're an option. And that's all I'm trying to say, is that they're, they're an option that I've looked into, uh, known about for a while, um, well before I came on to the council and was fighting your agenda. Um, but there's, there's other options that we can look at too, so we'll just need to weigh those out and see what, what's going to fit as best for our needs, and, you know, looking obviously at the costs.
And I just thought, I, the fact that, that it gives you the right opportunity to, I guess.
On your own, and then if you have any questions, call on me, and then we'll get together some more. And then, again, they've, they've got that letter pretty much put together.
Okay.
I guess it's on me as a board, you know, as a county court on Wednesday, and then sign it as, as a group, and then get forwarded on to us.
Just about any answers are current GIS program.
Yeah, I mean, right now we don't really have our own program. Um, like I said, we're outsourcing most of it. So we, yeah, Lane County, also GeoSolve, who recently was bought out from, from Number One, had just some purposes, you know, and there's state-funded programs for both of these, so.
So this is something.
But as outsourcing it currently, we're not able to provide these functions on a, on a better basis here to our citizens who would really like some of the systems mapping and really, you know, all of us can have a better inventory of the things that we have.
Barbara, I noticed all the information you gave us, it's, it's pretty in-depth, and I, in regards to all of the different services that can utilize the information. What, what do you see in, in, as far, would it have to be an intergovernmental agreement? Or ultimately, to, to make all of these entities come together to pay their share?
Yeah, there's a, um, so how, how Hardy County does that program, um, they hired, um, back in, in two thousand, a GIS coordinator, who, who started pretty much where we're at, ground zero, and had to build the program. And, um, you know, GIS was relatively new at that time with, you know, especially three, four counties and everything. But they, they built the program and contracted with, with both the communities of Burns and Hines at five thousand dollars. That may have, not been the starting rate, that's what it is currently, they provide, um, which the position is, is, you know, funded through that, as well as the, the white tribe also, as I believe their dues, two thousand, the rest are obviously a lot smaller. But then there's, you know, state revenue that comes in to help with map maintenance, and then also the, the M-SAG agreements for the Number One purposes, so.
So different funding, right?
Yes, a lot of different funding sources that, that build this program. And so what I'm proposing is that, you know, we have status quo, do nothing, continue to outsource, what we could do is a short-term, part-time agreement, which is what Hardy County is looking to do, which their letter, which we'll soon receive, will say that. Or looking at just providing ourselves with a full-time position, which comes at a greater cost, but I think still those costs are probably all available. And then we'd have somebody locally that we can all turn to, which, which, you know, county would then, and, and city, I mean, it, it just depends on our town, we just have to determine what we want to do, and where that money is essentially going to be located. It's going to be a town employee or a county employee, um, and those, those funds essentially come to the town to the, and then we, um, get, you know, reimbursement requests from Geo, GeoSolve, sorry, to, to handle the work that they're doing for advocacy and stuff, so. So anyways, that money could, we have a contract with them, that, you know, if there is an agreement that we're in with them, and, you know, it can be reviewed and, and canceled thirty-eight notes and some of that. And I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying, let's look at our options.
Sure.
So.
Yep.
That's all I have for now.
Okay. Um, let's go to mayor council manager updates. About the only thing I have is, uh, Roberta, I went to my first PAC meeting, and that was quite interesting. Um, I found out a whole lot of things out there, that if you want to take a tour, you're, they do a background check, and you're not allowed to wear blue jeans, because that's what prisoners wear. It was quite interesting, and it was good, good eye-opener for me to see how much of what they do out there. I was really impressed with it.
Yorlan, you have anything? Um, I'm trying to find my notes from the last CHIP meeting I attended, but, um, the last meeting was on January twelfth, and, um, I heard a lot of the updates from the different organizations that fall under CHIP, and, uh, I think they're doing a great job, and encourage those who have, you know, questions about, you know, regarding their health, to, to contact members of the CHIP organization who've got, um, our vendor, S-I-N-G-H, yeah, our vendor, anyways, he, he's great, and, you know, he's certainly got all the resources available at his disposal, if you'd like to make good contact with him. The paper does a great job of, um, you know, following up on those meetings, and always have a short article about that, so. But, um, other than that, that's all I have for, you know.
No updates?
No.
No updates for me?
Yeah. Good afternoon, sport, uh, Lakeview Wrestling, this Thursday, the Omen Home Duel. EBL basketball, Sergeant Matt, too, of which I'm coaching.
Yeah, basketball, basketball, right, wrestling number thirty. Okay, Roberta?
Uh, I don't really have too much to put on right now.
Okay.
Get it partied for a second. And then we will have a goal-setting session next Tuesday, so, about the goals. Okay.
Okay, anybody, oh, yeah?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I don't know if you all are aware, there is a meeting here tomorrow evening at six fifteen. Um, Lakeview Community Partnership is hosting a meeting with downtown businesses, um, to talk about things that downtown businesses would like to see happening in the core area, both activities and possibly, you know, um, amenities to enhance or possibly repair storefronts and/or sidewalks, or buildings, or whatever. It's just a meeting to allow people to, um, talk about that. So I don't know if any of you are able to come, it might be helpful, because I know that at some point, we're probably all going to be partnering with things that are around all of that, so. Six fifteen here.
Thanks. Speaking of that, um, this is my question, I had to leave the last meeting, I can't wait until now for what, something, oh, planning mission, planning mission last Tuesday. Um, did we finalize liaison assignments, and is that new list getting drafted up?
It is getting drafted, and I will.
Okay, so somebody's over that LCP, is that right? And so can they make sure they're there? Because I can't, I'm tomorrow.
I'm, I'm.
You're going to go, and, okay, so you can get some update. I wish I could be there, but.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure you all knew.
Yeah, and you can certainly.
Yeah, we'll get that, get that draft up, because then we'll be on our list. Okay. We have anything else? If not, meeting adjourned at four forty-four.